Can't see, I gotta take 'em down. What was that like? Just have to do it. Alright, at this time I call the Chesapeake County Board of Education meeting for Monday, November the 11th to order. Board members, you've been given the agenda prior to the meeting. Here no objection, the agenda was deemed approved by consent. Here none, it is approved. Alright, at this time we entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Yes, a motion that we had in to executive session to discuss employee hiring, compensation, termination, designation, contract matters and legal matters.
Second.
Motion been properly made by Dr. Coleman, seconded by Mr. Dusa. Any discussion? All in favor to say a motion, that's why I'm saying aye. All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. And we should be back in thirty minutes.
All right, at this time we entertain a motion to return to open session.
Still move.
Motion properly made by Mr. Coleman, properly executed by Mr. Dusa. Any discussion, all in favor of said motion, let me know and say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. All right, and my understanding is we have no public comment tonight, so we can skip right over number five. And we're gonna go down to our moment of silence in just a few moments, and then after which, uh, we will have a Mackby Elementary School student, Ms. Isabella Mesa, that's gonna come up and lead in our pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, we're gonna have a moment of silence, and also we'll take a few moments and recognize, do we have any veterans, uh, in the, in the building? If you do, we'd ask you to stand, slightly recognize you and thank you for your service. Thank you so much. Thank you. We certainly do, on behalf of our board, we, we thank you for your service to, um, to our country, uh, and we, and we certainly honor you, um, on this Veterans Day. All right, let's pause for a moment of silence, and then we'll have you come up and lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Okay, Ms. Isabella? Looking at her on one, sorry. All right, let's stand for our pledge, please.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and she's in fifth grade at Mackby Elementary School, so we certainly thank you for coming out with your family tonight and leading us in our pledge of allegiance. Thank you so much. All right, we'll take a few moments to welcome our visitors, uh, to our board meeting tonight. Uh, we certainly wanna welcome our, our SRO, uh, Mr. Larry Brown. We certainly welcome you to our meeting, uh, tonight. Administrators, uh, area citizens, principals, uh, we see several folks, um, here tonight. We certainly welcome you to our, our meeting. Also want to, also recognize our new board member-elect, I believe may be, uh, with us tonight, uh, Kaylee Blackwell. You here? Hey, you all right? All right, good to see you. Eric Coon. Good to see you, sir. Mr. Bob Robinson. All right, good to see you, sir. And we certainly wanna congratulate, uh, Mr. Sweeney and Mr. Teal, uh, for also being re-elected to, uh, the school board as well. All right, board members, uh, you've been given the, uh, minutes for October the 21st prior to the meeting. Hearing no objection, they'll be deemed approved by consent, and they are approved. All right, at this time we'll move on to our financial report, and we'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Kasky. And we welcome you tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, members of the board, good evening. Uh, prior to this evening, uh, you all received a copy of the financial review for the month of September. Are there any questions related to the review?
Any questions concerning the September monthly review? Hearing none? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, at this time we'll call on our HR coordinator, Ms. Crystal Cutchin, for our personnel report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, and members of the board.
Good evening.
Prior to this evening's meeting, you received a copy of the personnel exhibits. I recommend for your approval, Exhibits A through D.
Motion made by Mr. Teal, properly executed by Dr. Chapman. Discussion, all in favor of said motion, let me know and say an aye. All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, just moving right along, at this time we'll turn it over to Ms. Stubbs for our curriculum report, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Anderson, and members of the board. Um, I'd like to begin the curriculum report with a, um, recognizing our high school, uh, marching bands, along with the Chesterfield County, um, chorus, uh, excuse me, the Chesterfield High School chorus and Chesterfield Ruby Middle School chorus. Um, they were an integral part of the parade and the program for our Veterans Day, um, this morning, and so, um, really was, uh, nice seeing the kids out there paying tribute to our veterans. And so just wanted to, to, uh, discuss that or highlight that. So begin with our professional development. On October 14th, um, we hosted, um, the OEC Teacher Professional Development Day. Um, there were a lot of different trainings that day, and they are highlighted below. Edward's Elementary hosted the professional development for our assistant principals. Um, and all of the members of the OEC, the assistant principals came to Edward's Elementary for that day of professional development. Um, along with testing and accountability, um, the COGAT and Iowa Testing Assessment is complete. That is the assessment that is used to identify our gifted and talented students. Um, the district moved to online testing this year, and want to say that that did go very smoothly. Um, 11th grade junior scholars from across the district traveled to USC Lancaster, um, so that they could meet with other scholars from across the state. Um, on November 7th, the 10th grade junior scholars went to Clinton College and Winthorpe University, um, to tour campuses and learn a little bit more about what each college has to offer. Um, elementary schools are using something called the DRC Beacon, and it is a, um, a tool for our third graders through eighth graders to prepare them for SC Ready. So it mimics that SC Ready, um, assessment that they take in the spring, and gives them practice, and allows teachers opportunities to go back and reteach areas that students may need, um, assistance with. Um, under human resources, um, Dr. Anderson, um, went to the induction cohort on October 22nd and presented each teacher with a book, Ollie the Octopus, and it is a book authored by a teacher from Jefferson Elementary, Ms. Hope Savage Birch. So that's exciting, um, that they were presented that gift. In your packet, there is a flyer in there, um, it is a listing of all of the winter, um, fine arts programs that are, that are, um, going in, uh, along in the district during district during November and September, and so would love for any of you to come out and see these upcoming events. Wanted to say congratulations to the following students for placing at the Sherawalt Jazz Festival during the sidewalk competition, and they are first place was Bailey Hydrick, Alora Huerta, and Dakota Keith. Second place was Avi Wild, Holly Fortenberry, and Anna Rushing, and third place, Alex Gaston and Juju Gaston. Our marching bands recently went to the marching band championship, and you can see where all of our bands placed. Sherawalt High School advanced to the finals and are placed 11th overall in the state One A Championships. There's a lot going on with our CTE classes. The Tractor Safety and Operation Team at Mackby High School was named the region winning team at the DCIT in Darlington. Jace Moore came in first place overall, and Braxton Camarilla came in third, and the team won first place over 11 other schools. Central High, Sherawalt High, and Mackby High Schools have attended the, traveled to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. Students from Sherawalt High School traveled to North Middletown Beach to participate in the Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference. Under federal programs, McKinney-Vento training for all of our Chesterfield County School District staff is complete, and by law, all district employees must be trained on the identification process of possible homeless children. With our district instructional technology, Mr. Chad Johnson also attended the OEC Conference at Winthrop University, and he taught two classes on digital learning and music using an online sequencer. Adult Education will offer a free cybersecurity class for participants to obtain their comp TIA security certification. Finally, students in ninth and 10th grade are encouraged to apply for enrollment in the Governor's School of Math and Science Accelerate Program. And then there is also some information at the end concerning the Beta Club criteria for our middle and high schools. So lots of celebrations in November, lots of recognitions for students and staff, and at this time, are there any questions?
Uh, I'm gonna go back to the test for them. I know you have a good test for all second graders across the state, if you're a talented student. Do we have the numbers, uh, that test that have, that tested if you're a talented second grader?
The numbers that, so all of our second graders have been tested. I don't think, we do not have the results yet from that, and so all second graders have to make a certain score in what we call Dimension A, and that is that Iowa test and that COGAT test. But they also have to make, they also have to have a score in what we, in Dimension B and Dimension C. But they can score outright if they're at a certain percentage and go into the gifted and talented program as a third grader. But all students are tested.
Okay, second question. Uh, junior scholarship program, I remember that they travel to U S, like the plan, and like, and the HBCD student, like, and then they're in the scholarship program.
Say that again, Mr. Sweeney, or what?
HBCD student, and the, it's HBCD student.
Um, so it's my understanding, and Ms. Bruni is not here, but the, I think Mike Fanning coordinates that, it's through the OEC, and so they try to alternate some of the colleges that they visit, and this year, those are the three that they visited.
Any other questions?
Um, they did attend Clinton and Sweeney's set, so they went to Winthrop and Clinton.
Okay, so they went to two, two that day? Clinton and Winthrop.
I'm wondering about two, like, South Carolina State University, Virginia Avenue, and the other two.
Well, it is a HBCD school.
Um, yeah, okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much for the call, we appreciate it. All right, it's time we turn over to Dr. Anderson for our superintendent's report.
All right, thank you, and of course, I'd like to start off by saying that greater days are certainly ahead here in Chesterfield County School District. Want to congratulate and thank everyone for a successful sales penny tax renewal. Excited about that, excited about moving forward with our projects. Also want to thank those stakeholders who really worked behind the scenes to get the word out, to inform, to educate. Very, very important, it was a lot of work, but we, I really, really appreciate it, and it paid off for us. Again, greater days are certainly ahead. Also want to congratulate the Chesterfield High School girls weightlifting team, who are now the South Carolina Girls 2A Weightlifting Champs. So congratulations to the girls team at Chesterfield High School. We're excited about that, they won it on this past Saturday. So congratulations again to our girls at Chesterfield High School. Also, we had a wonderful Employee of the Year appreciation breakfast, and we had the opportunity to hear from our district Employee of the Year, Ms. Tina Ellis, who works over at Ruby Elementary, she did a wonderful job for us, but congratulations to her, and again, we appreciate and thank all of our employees and Employee of the Year representatives from our schools. Mr. Chairman, at this time I want to submit back to you all, and as well as the board, the last revision, or last, for the last time, the revision of board policy J I C J, for use of personal electronic devices in our schools for second reading.
Okay, we entertain a motion for second reading.
So moved.
Motion, motion made by Eric Dusa, properly executed by Dr. Coleman. Any discussion? All in favor said motion, all in saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous.
Thank you.
That is now policy.
Thank you. And last but not least, just two other announcements. November 12th, interim reports will be going home, and then on November 27th through the 29th, that is our fall break, and happy Thanksgiving in advance. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We do want to follow up with Dr. Anderson and say thank you to Chesterfield County for the bond referendum. We feel like you spoke loud and clear to the students and the support of Chesterfield County, so we certainly want to say thank you for that bond referendum. It was a huge passage. Board members, remind you, the SESBA Legislative Conference is December 8th, 7th, and 8th in Charleston. The SESBA Annual Convention will be February the 20th through the 23rd. New board members, you will be required to attend the new board member orientation, so you may need to get with Ms. Coon and give her the information that she needs to make sure that you're able to attend that meeting for your orientation. One change we do need to make to the agenda is on December the 9th, that is being moved to December the 10th, it's a Tuesday. The board meeting will be at Mackby High School, just going to let the principal know now, at 5 o'clock for executive session and 5:30 for the regular meeting. So that will be at Mackby High School on December the 10th, but we should be sure and get the word out as well, but that was a change that we are gonna make as well. Having nothing else on the agenda, we will dismiss mighty early, so at this time I'll call for German.
So moved.
Motion made by Dusa, properly executed by Dr. Coleman. All in favor said motion, all in saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. And it is unanimous. All right, thank you so much, appreciate you attending tonight.
Thank you.